Good morning Chairman. Councillor Rawlings, you're muted.
Good morning to all, I do hope you're all well and coping with the current restrictions, although they're hopefully easing a little as we speak. Rachel, would you like to see? I'm muted, Rachel.
Sorry, yes, I'll do the attendance call. And I'll ask all members to confirm that they're present and then I'll read out a list of the officers that we've got present as well. Councillor Mrs Rawlings.
Present.
Councillor Spencer.
Present.
Councillor Coopland.
Present.
Councillor Moore.
Present.
Councillor Parker.
Present.
Councillor Skinner.
Present.
Councillor Stakes.
Present.
Mr Middleton.
Present.
Mr Holdenby.
Present.
Thank you. We have the following officers present. We have Michelle Brady, Mike Norman, Sue Maycock, Lucy Pledge, Alistair Simpson and Matt Waller. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you for that, Rachel. Before we proceed with the agenda, members and officers, could I please ask you to observe a minute's silence for our former dearly beloved colleague, Councillor Lewis Strange. Thank you for that, everyone. Moving on to the formal agenda, I would just like to confirm that we have no one missed from the attendance list. I think that was read. And can I now move on to item one, which is apologies for absence? And Rachel, would you like to give us any apologies?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. We, I haven't received any apologies for absence.
Thank you. Moving on to item two, declaration of members' interests. Do I have any declarations, please members? Thank you. We move to item three. The minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of February. And I would like you to signal your acceptance by raising your hands, if that is possible. So could everyone activate their cameras please? Given no one has any issues with the minute. Thank you. Raise the hands, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think that is so unanimous, Rachel, thank you. So we now move to item four. Statement of accounts 2019-20 and the accounting policies there too. If I could turn to Sue Maycock, please, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, I'm Sue Maycock, Head of Finance Corporate. This is the report we bring to you each year, providing an update to you on anything new that's in the SIT for Accounting Code of Practice that will affect our preparation of our main accounts and also the pension fund accounts. We also provide you an update on the accounts and audit regulations and any changes to those that might affect our publication and audit of the accounts. We take the opportunity to present to you our accounting policies that we're going to use in the statement of accounts for the main accounts and the pension fund accounts as well. Page 18 of your report sets out changes to the code of practice this year. All of them are minor changes with no significant impact or they're not applicable to us. The new leasing accounting standard has been delayed by a further year and we won't need to implement that until April 2021. The accounts and audit regulations haven't changed, but coronavirus amendment came into force on the 30th of April. And for this year only, that means the deadline for publication of our audited accounts has moved from the 31st of July to the 30th of November. And also the draft accounts now have to be published by the 31st of August. Previously, that deadline was the 31st of May. We're working to these amended deadlines and our audit is due to start on the 1st of July. The changes to the accounting policies we're proposing this year for the main accounts and the pension fund accounts are all minor. Page 20 of your report sets out some examples of these and the policies are shown in full in appendices A and B, but with amendments shown. Thank you Chairman, happy to take questions.
Thank you Sue. Would members indicate if they wish to ask a question by pressing speak in the chat box, please? Aaron, do we have any questions?
Just one from Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Morning to you, thank you.
Thank you, morning Sue. Sorry, I put my camera on so I'm a little less rude. Just a quick one, the IFRS on page 18, IFRS 16, I have the joy of putting that in this year and I suppose my question is, are we making sufficient enough time to actually make sure we've got all the documentation, evidence etc required to do the leasing? Because it's quite a significant chunk of work. I know we're doing a lot of bit of work beforehand and the differum might help, but that's not to be underestimated.
Yes, yes, I can answer that. But we have been expecting to be implemented a year earlier than it is, so we already had a lot of the work well in hand and we haven't stopped doing that. That's, that work is still ongoing, so I'm quite happy we'll be ready for it. But I agree with you, it is a significant change.
And may I just ask on the other one, in terms of property? Do you want me to pick this up now, in terms of valuation?
Please.
The other headache at the moment, and obviously with, with Covid and that will no doubt come across this a number of times during today. The utilisation, the opportunity to value property and people's best guess around valuing property has gone a little bit haywire. And trying to get opinions on what a property is worth, whether it's devalued etc, is quite difficult, especially around commercial properties. Have we had any readout from their side about what they may be looking at?
You mean in terms of auditors?
Yeah, auditors and just generally in terms of principles and how the, how the, this CC is preparing for dealing with that situation.
Okay, I can answer that. We had our property valuations in from our valuers. Most of our property aren't commercial properties and they're valued on depreciated replacement cost. So there may be some issues in terms of whether the valuation as at the 31st of March is still current in the new year. And seeking some advice from the valuers about anything we need to put in our disclosure notes relating to that. So I think the disclosures will kind of represent the estimates we've made and then if the auditors have any particular concern, we'll pick it up during the audit. If that means we have to go back to the valuers then, then we will do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Sue.
Mike, would you like to comment on that from the auditor's point of view?
Yeah, I'm happy to, I mean, we touched on it later in our report, but I'm happy to, to, to cover it now. So the Covid 19s had a significant impact on any of the fair values in the, in the financial statement. We have had some correspondence already with the trust valuers in relation to that. They have, as expected, followed RIC's guidance and included in their valuation report reference to what they regard as a material uncertainty around the valuations, given some of the difficulties in getting market values etc. We, as a firm, we've got our own valuers and that process is underway, sort of giving advice around the reliability of the information. So I think the key point, I think, is we're cited on, on that particular point. We're discussing it with, with the officers. We've also got communications with the valuer. We'll take advice as necessary and obviously update the audit committee when we get to that stage.
Thank you Mark, and obviously we'll touch on that and other issues a little later in the agenda. Thank you. Aaron, I believe Andrew would like to come in.
Yes, thank you Chair. This is a bit of semantic purity really. I'm so programmed to alert to risk and impact that when I see a statement which says it's not applicable in any changed scenario, I, I, I sit up and take note. I think Sue's explained that the changes are so minor that there's no significant potential for impact. But rather than saying not applicable, if the statement could read, senior finance team has reviewed and determined that there is no significant impact because of the minority of the changes, that stopped me being curious.
Sue, would you like to come back?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a note of that and we can bear that in mind for next year's report, thank you.
Thank you Sue, thank you for that Andrew, that's very helpful. Obviously, I'm looking to Sue here, the, the, you know, when we go through the financial statements, the Covid 19 effects are likely to be in the way of disclosure notes, so they won't be, be unlikely to be actually financial changes on the accounts, but will be, there'll be disclosure notes and study, I'm correcting that slightly.
Yes, I think it will affect the disclosure notes and, and there'll be some kind of more substantial descriptions in the narrative report at the front of the accounts. And, and we're now looking at events after the balance, the balance sheet date as well to see what needs to be reported in there.
Yeah, yeah, right. Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, there we go, I've got a little problem with my, my, my camera seems to be pointing to the reverse. Could someone indicate how I may correct that? So I'm photographing something opposite to me rather than myself, I do apologise.
Councillor, are you on an iPad?
Yeah. No, so, oh no, an HP, I do apologise, I don't quite know what's happened.
Oh, I'm sorry, beyond my, my skill set then if it's HP, sorry.
Don't worry about it for now Chairman.
Well, we'll believe it for the moment, you don't need to see my, my wonderful appearance, I'm sure we can manage without that, thank you. Okay, so are there any further speakers? It doesn't seem so. So we have the recommendations which I will pose and I will read out. We, one, note the changes required to the statement of accounts and code of practice for 1920. Note the amended deadline of the 30th of November 2020, application of the audit statements for accounts 1920. Three, approve the statement of accounting policies as appendix A, to use and impair the council's accounts for financial year ending the 31st of March 2020. And four, we approve the statement of accounting policies as appendix B, to use and impair the local government pension scheme pension fund account while our financial year ending is 31st of March 2020. So could I have a second of that please?
I'm happy to second that Chair.
Thank you Aaron. So if members could signal their acceptance, please by raising their hands, I shall do that then. Thank you. We will now move on to item five, which is review of the government's framework and development of the annual governance statement, or the AGF. So I'd like to invite Lucy to present this.
Thank you Chairman, I'm Lucy Pledge, Head of Internal Audit and Risk for the County Council and I'm presenting to the audit committee the review of the council's annual governance statement. The annual governance statement is acquired by the council under the Accounts and Audit Regulations and it's really set out to say how well the council has been run up to the 31st of March 2020. But because it is a contemporary statement, it does take into account any issues. So you will see from the draft statement that it does mention the impact of Covid quite significantly across, across the different areas of the council's business. The statement is a corporate effort and it's developed by and coordinated by the council's governance group, but it is approved and signed off by the corporate leadership team with reference to various assurance documents, such as my head of internal audit report and the assurance statements of the council. It's based on best practice, so it does set out against a set of principles around good governance and the, the committee is asked really to see that it's an open and honest assessment of how well the council is run. And as the, the committee charge with governance, does it really stack up with what you know and what you've seen during the year? So the statement has some key elements which I will bring out just as reference and, and it is actually signed by the leader, the chief exec and the section 151 officer. So if I can take you to page 69, one of the key elements of the pack and that's the executive summary. So this goes over to page 69 and 70 and it's really a summary of, of the overall assessment. It sets out the key messages the leader and section 151 and the chief exec wishes to state to, to the public. And also one of the key outcomes of the review is any significant governance issues. And the assessment this year has quite rightly taken into account the Covid and that is the significant governance issue drawn to the attention of the committee that we feel should be published in the statements. In addition to the review, there are a number of improvements. So I will take you to page 86 of the pack and that sets out where the, that they have assessed through the assurance framework where we need to improve. There are quite a number, it recognises that the council is a big organisation and has some complex systems. So they are set out in, in the paper on page 86. And 88 is sets out my head of internal audit opinion. That again is a key, it's input to the assessment of the overall governance assurance and this framework of the council and that's giving my opinions on, on the status of the framework with some caveats around Covid. So the statement is presented to the committee and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you Lucy. I'm looking for members' questions if you could indicate if we should speak. Alex.
Thank you Chair, I've got a few sort of comments and questions if, if that's okay. So firstly Lucy, on page 73 of the report, it mentions the IT governance and that there's progress that's been made. And I just wondered if there could be a bit more sort of detail on that because it is, it is heavily overdue. So the original target date was the 31st of March 2018 and you've mentioned that improvements have been implemented during 1920, but I just thought maybe a comment to reflect the fact that this is way overdue should be put in there. And that's the first comment. The next comment is, again on the same page, it mentions the business world re-engagement to be delivered by the 31st of December 2019. And then it says progress on track, but we're now in, in June 6, in, in June 2020. So I just wondered, and it says about commencing work in April, so that suggests it's not on, it's not on track. And so could that be reworded to reflect that please? On page 75, this is a slightly picky one, but where it says some performances being met, some mostly fully, I just wondered if you could change some to read partly, I think that just, I think that just reads better. And I don't know whether other members agree with that. And then page 78, I just wanted to query, it mentions a new capital strategy and a gateway and review process from April 2020. I just wondered if you could add a little bit of information about that because I'm not sure that's come to the committee. I know there was lots of chat about changing the scrutiny arrangements of sort of funding and projects. Is that referring to the same thing or am I getting that mixed up in my head? And pay the final point, sorry, I know there's a few here, and page 86, it mentions sort of a positive assurance picture, which I do agree to an extent, but there is this sort of direct transfer, if you like, from green to amber within the report. So I don't know whether we could change the wording to reflect that there actually, it is almost a backward step on the previous year.
Thank you Alex, and number of points there Lucy, would you like to take them in turn please?
I'll do my best, if Councillor Moore could email me those, that would be helpful. But I think all the amendments on the IT, I certainly can put some more and the backward look, I can put those context. So it's very helpful to have that challenge and fresh pair of eyes on, on those. So, so I can definitely do the IT and the business world. Again, on the, the assessment of some to partly, again, that can be changed if you feel that, if the committee feel that that's sort of a bit more of a better descriptor. The other one was around the capital, that was around, I mean, Michelle might be better to answer that, but that was around the new process and scrutiny and making capital programmes more transparent and a better accountability. So that was still a work in progress and that's why that's in around as an improvement area. So I think I've covered them all, I've made a note of all the little tweaks and I can amend those. The actual statement does come back to you in July, the final sign off, so you'll be able to see those amendments. But it will be helpful if you could send those cosmetic areas or changes and emphasis, then I can follow those up and amend those.
Thank you Lucy, I'll send those to you in, in an email.
Thank you Alex. I have, I'm looking to Aaron here, Rob I think, and then Andrew, thank you. I think you're unmuted Rob.
I thought Andrew was, somebody else was first in line, but mine's.
Never mind, I think you put your hand up first, I think.
Okay, yeah, fine. The point I wanted to make is that OBE and scrutiny management board are taking, there's a paper going to OSMB and the beginning of July and the, the meeting is deferred a bit later than, rather than the end of June. And we're looking at a new, new ways of monitoring the IT programme in the sense of trying to do a number of things. One is obviously, how well are we doing in delivering on the programme? But the other is separating out the, the, the big projects that we've got, so that we make sure that we are monitoring and performance currently. So when that paper is completed, it would be well worth circulating to all members of the, the audit committee.
Thank you for that Rob, that would be very helpful, thank you. I move to, to Andrew.
Thank you Chair. It was page 78 and slightly outside the scope of audit committee maybe, but it is a question of assurance. The bit did outturn for 2021, what degree of confidence can there be in any forward financial plans given the very long list of unknowns and uncertainties? We are not able, well, I guess we're not able with great certainty to predict revenue levels, lots of income etc, additional costs. And therefore, how will systems ensure there is comprehensive capture of all the extra costs, all the extra losses of income that will feed into the actual performance for 2021?
Thank you Andrew, I've moved to Lucy please.
The medium term financial plan is being reviewed and revised during this summer and also there are systems in place to capture all the additional costs to, of Covid. But Michelle I think is present on the meeting, so I think it would be better for Michelle to answer this question Chairman.
Thank you, if you could Michelle, and also if you could comment on the capital strategy, that would be great, thank you.
Yep, so I'll just start with the capital strategy, if you, if that's okay. The capital strategy hasn't been brought to audit committee because it was part of our budget papers. So as part of setting the budget for 2021, OSMB and the executive approved the capital strategy and then that went to full council in February as part of our budget papers. And it basically, we had, we had a capital strategy two years ago, that was the first introduction of it and that was basically setting out how our capital programme would work and how we would finance it and prioritise it. But last year when we updated the strategy, we put in a section about introducing some new governance and that was effectively officer governance to try and provide a gateway and review and challenge back to our officers about business cases and what was going forward into the capital programme. I think there still is some discussion going on with Councillor Parker about how this feeds into OSMB because that's the remit of OSMB to review the capital programme as it's being delivered. And so that, that's where the capital strategy went and that's that the gateway review process is basically about offices looking at some consistency and ensuring the information coming into the decision-making process is as good as it can be. In terms of the monitoring for 2021, there is a little section at the end of that value for money statement, at the end of page 79 and 80, which is kind of picking up on some of the changes we've had to make due to Covid 19. We were already planning to update our medium term financial plan and that's on the agenda to go to OSMB in August I believe and then, or July sorry, and then it'll end up going to council in September, ahead of us setting our budget for, for the following year. But alongside that, we've, we've had to pick up and we have picked up a lot more reporting. So we've been reporting into government and to our leadership team very regularly. We've put processes in place to capture the additional costs of Covid 19 and they are fairly significant. We've been given a grant to help with that, so we've received 35 million as an emergency grant from government to. as an emergency grant from government to help support those costs. And we have to report back to government how we're using that and how we're operating with it. So we have stepped up our reporting quite significantly. And we've got additional reports coming into overview and scrutiny management board during the year, which will pick up the Covid-19 and the impact on our budgets as they were set during 2021. So hopefully that reassures the Audit Committee, but happy to follow upon any of that if that would be helpful.
That is assuring, Chairman.
Sorry, Andrew.
That is assuring. Thank you.
Just to come back on a couple of points, one that Andrew made, Michelle. I mean, unlike lots of the districts, because we're a lot bigger organisation, we don't have an awful lot of, we don't rely on income so much, do we? That's one point. And another one is in terms of the accumulation of the cost for Covid-19 and the ongoing monitoring of those. I know you've said they'll go through the normal budget scrutiny of OSMB. How are we actually, are the additional costs recorded in one place or not? To compare them against the thirty-seven million grant we've got from central government to know if that's going to be sufficient or if it isn't?
So in the majority of the services, they have set up additional codes where we've put some specific actions in place. They've set up specific codes so we can easily monitor those costs coming through. And that's things like the adult care sustainability fund, where we've got claims coming in from our adult social care providers asking for support to help with additional costs. They're all being channelled through one place so we can easily identify them. We've also asked all of our budget holders to indicate where they're picking up extra costs. So we've got a number of forms and pro-form has gone out to our managers asking them if they're picking up any extra costs in their budget to make sure they're recording them and they're coming back to our team on a regular basis as well. So a bit of a mixture about how we're capturing costs. Also, the finance team have been connected to each of the LRF recovery cells and response cells. So we've been involved with those, the work that the LRF have been doing to make sure we're picking up any costs that are kind of coming out of the, initially from the response, but now to recovery. So we've kind of got quite a few angles covered, making sure that we are capturing the costs and we are monitoring that. As I say, it's been fortnightly up to now, back to the corporate leadership team so they can understand the impact of decisions that are being made to help our suppliers and our residents and the, you know, the support that we've been putting in place. In terms of, the districts have been affected much more than us to a degree because quite a lot of their spend is supported by discretionary income. As you've said, things like commercial income, parking income, planning fees, which isn't such a major part for our budget, discretionary income not really a feature so much in our costs. It's more to do with the costs and the additional costs of supporting areas like adult social care and school transport, things like that.
And just picking up on one further question, Michelle. In terms of monitoring of our additional costs, one would assume, and I'm very confident you're going to assure me of this, that all those additional expenditures go through exactly the same process as a normal expenditure in terms of authorisation and monitoring?
They do. They're going through our normal authorisations in terms of budget holder spend. Where we've put extra support in place, those decisions have all gone through directorate leadership team meetings for approval and through to our corporate leadership team. In fact, the payments we're making to support the adult care services, which is the largest area for us, they're going through to Glenn on a regular basis and they're being supported by their DLT in terms of making sure everyone's happy with the provision we're making.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have any further speakers, Aaron? Do we have any further speakers?
Not that I've seen on the thing. I didn't have anyone.
Hands up. No, I can't see anyone. Okay.
Sorry, Chairman. I think councillor Parker indicated he wanted to speak again.
Thank you, Chair. Rob?
Sure.
Come back.
Yeah, no, this is a fresh question, but still in the same context. When we had our last meeting, we had the corporate management team there. And Debbie Barnes was Chief Executive and I highlighted four areas for improvement. Okay, one of which was a risk concerning the workforce challenge and recruitment in key areas, of which I can remember social work and engineers. That's on page ninety. Sorry, on page ninety, when it comes to our strategic risk register, I don't see any mention of the challenge, whether it's worse or not, in the context of coronavirus. But I just would welcome a comment from Lucy's team about whether or not we see in terms of our strategic risk register, that the need to maintain the workforce and the workforce challenge that Debbie identified when she spoke about the issues facing her as a chief executive in February.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. So yes, that is still an issue for the council in terms of workforce. And obviously the dynamics have changed quite significantly with Covid in terms of recruitment and retention and wellbeing. So there is, as part of our recovery plan, some significant work being undertaken on that. So we haven't actually gone down into a detail on the significance governance issue, but it does include both the impact on community, the impact on how the council works. I can certainly go back to Debbie and ask CLT if that needs to be brought out in more emphasis on the improvements.
Okay.
Thank you, Lucy.
Andrew Middleton.
Andrew.
Yes, thank you. Following councillor Parker's lead, we know that care homes are in a vulnerable position at the best of times. They're put under immense strain. Is there a monitoring process to ensure that we know if care homes are getting close to the edge and might collapse? Because we will need those care homes in the future.
The care homes are part of the monitoring and oversight of that is through the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum as part of both the response and recovery to the pandemic. The council is working with partners to pull together a care home resilience plan, so then that is cited. They have also written to the minister on how the council is supporting the care home sector. That covers a detailed plan and that covers finance, staff, the communities, the residents. So it's quite a comprehensive plan and it is mentioned in the annual governance statement in terms of that regime. It hasn't gone into a lot of detail because that could be about five or six pages in its own right. But it is mentioned that the council continues to coordinate and support not only the care homes, but the businesses and the public through the volunteers and through the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum with its partners of that, which obviously is health, public health and all the other public sector bodies. So there is a real rigor in that and it's coordinated by the chief exec of the county council. So there is a real support network there and that is monitored on a frequent basis. I don't know how often that is monitored because I'm not in the actual resilience forum itself. So that's either weekly or daily. There is a real oversight on the care sector with partners. Does that give you some insight?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Andrew. Do you have any further speakers?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay. So bear in mind that obviously this will come back to us at a future meeting for us to move the final of this. So we have the recommendations that, which I will pose. That's that the Audit Committee consider the external audit strategies and progress report. And. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong recommendation. I do apologise. So that the Audit Committee consider the contents of the draft annual government statement 2020 and one agrees that actually reflects how council is run. Two, that the statement includes significant governance or issues or key risks it would have expected to be published. And three, identifies any changes it wishes to make to the statement. Could I have those recommendations seconded, please?
Seconded, Chair.
Thank you. So again, could all members put their cameras on, physically raise their hands, please? And I will raise my hand although you can't see me, so I will do mine remotely. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I think, Rachel, that is carried fully, is it not? Thank you.
Yes, yes, Chairman.
Thank you. So we can then move to item six, which are the external audit strategies for Lincolnshire Council, Almiron, Lincolnshire Council, Pension Fund. So if I could turn to Mike Norman, please, to present this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. By context, the audit strategy memos are two of the main forms of communication with you as an Audit Committee. It sets out the high-level risks that we're required to report on this year, which have been informed by our audit planning. Gives a broad indication of the timing of our work and sort of declarations in relation to the auditing standards that apply. Two documents that you've got for the county council and the pension fund were prepared and ready for issue in March. If I'd have been in the March meeting, I would have said that the format of the audit strategy and the broad matters that we're communicating are largely unchanged from previous years. And that the significant risks that we've identified in there in relation to the county council and the pension fund are again largely similar to previous years. For obvious reasons, we've revisited the planning and the context of the implications on our work and the council and the pension fund's financial statements arising from Covid-19. What we've produced as an addendum, I guess, is the update progress reports, the main summary of which is on page 133 of your pack. And sets out really an update for the audit strategies in three key areas. The first is recognise that, as with many other organisations, Miss ours has moved to a remote footing for carrying out its work. And I guess by way of reassurance to confirm that so far these arrangements have worked reasonably well at the clients that we've been auditing over the last couple of months. And indeed, the arrangements for communicating with the council have largely been successful up to now. And what we'll do is continue to anticipate that both yourselves and we will operate on that remote footing over the coming months and will likely overcome any practical difficulties if there are any. The second point, which Sue alluded to earlier in her paper, was the significant changes in the statutory timetable for the accounts production with the deadline for publication of draft statements being moved from the end of May to the end of August. And the deadline for publication of audited accounts from the end of July to the end of November. Now, before that announcement was made, we had in place a resourced plan and a series of dates agreed with our clients across the sector to allow us to meet that work with one or two minor exceptions by the end of July. And what we've had to do is reshuffle the pack to some degree in parts due to reflect some of the changes in the deadlines in other sectors. For example, the NHS deadline, which has moved from the end of May to the end of June. And what we have in place at the moment is a plan which should allow us to complete the majority of the work in July and August. And we're aiming to submit our audit completion report to the Audit Committee in September. Clearly, there's a number of continuing uncertainties around that. But at this stage, that's the broad timetable that we're working to. The second, sorry, the final point I alluded to is just some of the implications of Covid-19 on the material figures within the financial statements of the pension fund and the council. And as I alluded to earlier, these largely relate to any fair values for the 31st of March, which may be impacted by the various estimation techniques in place. And in practice, they actually link to the significant risks that we've already identified in our audit strategy memos, i.e. the valuation of land and buildings, the valuation of any pension liabilities in council's accounts and the valuation of any pension assets, particularly those where there are unquoted or the estimation techniques are subject to some of the volatility in the market which was experienced around the year end. So the counting point to say is at least that the risks that have been presented are consistent with areas that were already cited on, albeit the level of risk within those particular areas is probably heightened. But we are, that's part of our audit strategy and we're going to relate with management over the next couple of months and report back to you on the findings from those areas of work. The other area, which just to summarise on page 133, which we touched on, is the value for money conclusion. I think some of the earlier discussion related to the impact of Covid-19, particularly on the cost pressures and loss of income on local authorities. And as was already referred to, and like some of your district colleagues, the county council has been less impacted by the loss of income. But clearly, the financial pressures has been significant, albeit largely contained within a central government grant. The other point to clarify, I guess, is our value for money conclusion for 1920 refers to the arrangements in place up to the end of March. And thankfully, the Covid-19 issues only emerged in the last couple of weeks. So we're unlikely to have had a significant impact. Nevertheless, we have had a discussion with colleagues at the council and are satisfied that there are no material issues which indicate that we're unlikely to be able to give a qualified opinion in relation to value for money conclusion for 1920. And there are no significant audit risks arising from that particular work. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm taking the document. It's red and are clearly happy to deal with any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mike. Very helpful. I'll have a question. I think you have a question from Paul.
Councillor Skinner.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking at page 134 and then looking at page 1991 of the previous report, where it suggested that there was a risk that was being assessed with management oversight. Now, look on one, management of override controls. If I put the two together, I would have a concern regarding projects to whether we have consistent control at that point. And I would look for a comment back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn to you, Mike. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councillor Skinner. You have to have a problem with the internet at this end. So could you just remind me which page you're referring to and possibly repeat question, please?
Yeah, that's certainly not a problem, Mike. I'm looking at page 134 of your report. Top is to audit progress and it says management override controls. And it says there's a planned response and updated June 2020. When I look at the previous report, either pages 1991 of the previous report, it would suggest that there's a transformation progress of management in progress and management oversight is maybe not clear. and management oversight is maybe not clear. How are we ensuring that we're actually delivering on this at the moment?
So you're referring to the comments in the annual governance?
I am, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I guess what we're drawing attention to is specifically any accounting entries. So there are a number of areas of the financial statements which are subject to controls through journals, which could mean that some figures are, for want of a better term, manipulated to manage the financial risk of misreporting, reporting or fraudulent reporting through there. So that's the specific area of focus that we've got. Now, the controls that you've alluded to, or you referred to rather in the annual governance statement, they are controls that we consider, but more from a possibly from a value for money conclusion point of view, in terms of whether the the Council has got overall adequate arrangements in place for controlling and delivering services and keeping within budgets, et cetera. So I guess we're not necessarily comparing the two areas. One, the area we're focused on is some quite specific accounting controls, albeit they form part of a broader control environment within the Council. And the particular points around the programme delivery, again, we would take those into account as part of our overall value for money conclusion, but we would, at this stage, don't regard those as sufficient to indicate that there's a pervasive inadequacy in the arrangements in place.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, Paul. And Ian, I think you have a question as well, both of them, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Again, it's probably more a series of kind of observations and points for the Council as well. We're going through a highly remote audit at this point in time. I've gone through a couple. We've not found any problems actually doing a remote audit. In fact, actually, there's been areas of efficiency where I've actually been able to drive the cost down. So it is challenging in certain parts, but actually, I think it's, I've seen it on a number of occasions now, it's been delivered quite well. So I'm hoping that's going to continue. Early site, I guess, really, number one is on the Covid requirements. I've seen a lot of businesses require an emphasis of matter in their opinion, which is quite scary for people who are not used to seeing an emphasis of matter and also what the disclosures are required. So if we could have early site, please, if that is going to happen, I appreciate from a VFM conclusion is one thing, but on the accounts, it's a different matter. And the other thing, actually, is probably more of a suggestion, actually, to Michelle rather than to Michael. You may want to just have a quick chat with a gentleman formerly of this parish, Mr David Forbes. We are with on the Police and Crime Commissioner. We're still waiting to sign off the 1819 accounts due to the issues that we've had. We have had a challenge around the pensions, dealing with hymens. Michelle, you may just want to have a quick chat with David just to understand what sort of things they've been struggling with and if that applies to you guys.
Ian, Michelle, would you like to respond, please?
I certainly can speak to David. I know I spoke to Julie Flynn last week, actually. She was telling us they still haven't signed off their 1819 accounts. Back to stress, again, they've got different auditors to us, so.
They do, indeed. I can't hold Michael accountable for this one.
And I'm not aware that there's any issues we're expecting around pension specifically in the accounts, but I can chat with David, certainly.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I think Andrew wanted to comment as well.
Yes, I do have Andrew's message. Andrew, would you like to come in now, please?
No, I don't have a comment there.
Yeah, I mean, Andrew Cook, I do apologise, Andrew.
No, no, thank you, Chair. Yeah, Andrew Cook, I'm Executive Director of Resources. Yeah, so this is in response to Counselor Skinner's question. I think that particular risk in the in the annual governance statements and acknowledgements, and one that was picked up in our peer review last September, that we're obviously on this journey at the moment in terms of creating corporate transformation resource, and there'll be more on that later in 2020. But, you know, historically, transformation and service development has been carried out within services individually and without that corporate oversight, and obviously, we're now moving on to a more corporately engineered programme, so specifically around that. And so Mike from Mazars filled in the other side of that equation. So hopefully, that provides a bit more assurance that what that's specifically talking about. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sue, can I just say something?
Indeed, yes.
Yeah, he's just referring back to the point Ian raised in relation to emphasis of matter paragraphs. I mean, we're coming through our NHS audit sectors at the moment, and there are a couple of areas there where we've had to include emphasis of matter paragraphs in the main, referring to valuation uncertainties, where the valuer has disclosed material uncertainties in their opinion, and we've had to, sorry, in their report, and we've had to draw attention to that in our in our report. But that, again, it's unusual, but it's it's a factually based reference, and is really only required where it's kind of unable to determine a fair value and agree that the uncertainty can be mitigated. I think the pension investment valuations is probably a broader concern, and that a lot of those a significant proportion of pension fund assets are based on unquoted investments, so they're inherently difficult to value in a good year, and there's a high degree of estimation uncertainty. That estimation uncertainty is significantly increased at the moment. And really, that's something that we kind of, as auditors, are trying to work through. We're trying to engage our own valuers and also communicate with fund managers to get a better understanding of the estimation techniques that are being used at this year end. More information on those, the actual valuations versus the estimates used at the end of March will emerge over the next over the next month or so. And clearly, we'll update the Committee, and if that does have an impact on on the opinion, then again, we'll take care to clearly explain that, and by all means, deal with any questions when we get to that stage.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any further speakers?
No, Chairman, it doesn't look like there are any more indications to speak.
Thank you. So we have the recommendation, item six, which I shall propose, that the Audit Committee considers the external audit strategies and progress report, identifies any further information or actions that may be required. So could I have a second, please?
Chairman, just to interject, the item Chairman's actually lost connectivity, and I don't think he's going to be rejoining us either because he's struggling.
Could I have someone just to second the proposal, please?
I'm happy to second, Chair.
Thank you. So again, could people raise their hands physically on the camera, and I will put mine upon the, I'm raising my hand here. Thank you. Is that everyone, Rachel? Thank you. Yes, I think that's full house, I think. Okay, thank you. I can confirm the outcome of the vote. So we can move on to item seven, which again touches on some of the issues we've raised in the previous discussions, and that's the Counter Fraud Annual Report. Diane, I think he's on, just on speaker with his mouse, is that correct, Diane?
Hello. Chairman, it's Lucy Cledge here. I'll be presenting this report.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Diane should be on audio. So it's Lucy Cledge, Head of Internal Audit.
Sorry, I do apologise.
I think Diane might have been on mute. Diane is available to answer any questions when I've just gone through the presentation. So if I can take you to page 149 of the pack, that sort of brings together the key messages. And then what I would do is just draw out those. So one of the key pillars of good governance is how the Council tackles and prevents fraud. The Committee has considered in its work programme the fraud risk register and has had a progress report. So the report is bringing together all the work of the team. We have a small team within corporate audit and risk management, and it's bringing out the outcomes. So as you can see, there's been some success in the year in terms of 114,000 recoveries, but also one of the key messages and one of the key pillars of our work is raising awareness within the business. And you can see one of our colleagues presented a 1.6 million mandate forward within business support team, where they were doing their due diligence around changes to payment details. So not only is the team undertaking proactive work, but the messages and the due diligence around undertaking, particularly around our business support colleagues, is paying dividends, and that's a continued programme of awareness. So the outcome of the year is, I think, giving the Audit Committee assurance that there's still a strong commitment to counter fraud, and that appropriate action is taken. And then it also gives you some of the key results around proactive work and the outcomes of the investigations. The plan that we set around March every year is a statement of intent, because with Counter Fraud, it's a very although we do proactive work, investigations tend to come through our whistleblowing and through our management arrangements, and they're quite reactive and can impact on the delivery of the work plan. But that said, you can see the team delivered 87% of the planned work. So again, a real positive outcome. If I can take you also now to page 156 of the pack, that gives headlines around effectiveness. Now, in the past, some of the councillors have asked and members of the Committee have asked around benchmarking. So we've pulled together and have attempted to do more work around benchmarking, but what I can say is that Lincolnshire's participated in the national review of the fraud risk and actually got mentioned on Monday in a recent publication. So we can bring that publication to the Committee in the outcome, and that's looking at the fraud and risk review report that was issued on Monday. But Diane and her team participated, and they got mentioned about the work that they were doing. So that was, again, getting out there. And we've also worked with our network group. It is a bit like comparing apples with pears to try to benchmark fraud. But we do look at what intelligence is out there, what key messages are out there, because each organisation is very different. The risk profile is very different. But what we can give you assurance is that we benchmark against good practice, and where we can get information, we share that with you as the Audit Committee. So I think that's all I wanted to say in terms of presenting the paper. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lucy. I think Ian, you've indicated to speak, and then I, please.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, Lucy. I haven't forgot to say this too early, I apologise. Just a quick one. I just want to check, then I've got two observations as well. In the actual covering paper on page 144, I'm just making sure, this might be a typo or I've misread it, it says the level of recoveries is 124,000. Actually, everything else suggests it's 114.
Yeah, I'm just going to hand over to Diane, because I asked her that question. I think it is a typo, but Diane, can you please respond?
Yes, I can. I can confirm it is a typo.
That's fine.
We have made subsequent recoveries afterwards, but the 144 is the 1920 figure.
114, okay, cool. Thank you. Just a couple of things. Again, is, I know we kind of, it is on that benchmarking element. I think it's contextual. I know it's difficult, but actually, there's things like, when we look around the rest of the country, what are the sizes of the counter fraud teams? What is their base? Some sort of loss ratio recovered, et cetera. So whilst it isn't exactly an exact science, I think it would be helpful to actually context that for some. I think it just gives a better picture for just how we're doing, because we've made various assertions in here about how well we're doing. And I do think we've made some good progress and there's good activity in there, but I do think we're missing that. And I think it's I'd like to see some sort of KPIs. And I use quite hard in fraud. I've done it many years myself. It's quite hard. But actually, that there are things, it's quite easy to go, we've stopped one big thing, and to hang off that news story where there's actually a lot of good things going on. And I'd just like a little bit more narrative if we can, not least on some of the proactive stuff, especially around Covid. We've got a lot of things, as I say, you made some great notes on here, that it's going to be putting pressure on the system, and there's lots of opportunities for them to do so. I would have liked to say, great. So these are specifically the areas that we're most worried about, and this is how we're tackling it from a proactive point of view.
Right, I'll come back and then hand over to Diane. I think it is like apples and pears. Not all councils have their own dedicated counter fraud team, and that's the issue. They don't have the same setup. This Council recognised the importance of counter fraud quite early on. We've had an established team for over 10 years, so it's very difficult to get those figures and that benchmarking data. What we do do is benchmark against the FIFA Code of Practice, which sets out what people should be doing. So again, we can be more transparent around the outcome of that benchmarking. We do benchmark with the Midland Counties. So again, we can revisit it, but we do have a look at it every year, Ian, and it is very difficult to to segregate the costs and outcomes, because they're not published, and they're not always easy to get to. But again, it's something that we can work on and bring that more cited to, because Counselor Parker asked around the same issues around benchmarking last year. So we've tried to get that data, but it is definitely something that can work on. And the publication of that review paper, again, we can look at what that's telling. I haven't seen it myself. It was only published in Monday. So once we have a look at that, we can bring it, again, something in the autumn and working with Councilmore around as our advocate for, on the Committee around our champion on Counter Fraud. We can see what is best to bring back to give you that cited and comparison. Diane, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just a little bit more around the benchmarking, if I may. We do participate in something called CFAC, and that's, it's a survey run by SIPFAR. And that's comparing counter fraud data, but unfortunately, it's not a mandatory field, so some councils participate, some don't. So again, as Lucy said, it's very much apples and pears. In terms of best practice, we have been recognised on a number of occasions as being one of the high performing councils. The paper that Lucy refers to was probably and that was a review into fraud and corruption in local government procurement. And again, Lincolnshire County Council was cited in a number of instances of case studies where we deliver on good practice. The work that Lucy referred to, the Midland Counties brought, again, that's a subgroup of the Head of Internal Audit Group for the Midlands. And we participate, in fact, we actually coordinate that for the whole of the Midlands. We share case studies, we compare notes, and a lot of the councils actually lean towards us for advice as well. So very much at the forefront, and it's nice to get some national recognition.
And specifically, if I can, on the Covid piece, because again, that's the bit where I would like your insight. You guys are, you're living this day in, day out, understanding where you're worried. Where are you thinking about this? Because this applies into all the other activities we're going to be talking about. It's about where do you think the vulnerabilities are coming in now with all the shift? And it's kind of that, it's that insight that I'm looking for from you guys, because this is where you're specialising.
Yes. Can I just kick you off, Diane, first? So I suppose to give assurance to the Audit Committee is that finance have done a lot of work around due diligence to making sure that the systems where we are passporting funds and going through and given support, that there's appropriate level of control, reasonable level of control. And we've also been given advice through the Audit Team and Counter Fraud Team on systems and processes. So I think that the checks and balances are at the beginning, but we are also going to relook at our counter fraud plan and circle back.
Work we've looked at in terms of payments analysis has led us to launch an investigation, and it is targeting our work very closely. So we recognise that there are risks. And as with any counter fraud work that we do, we will review the fraud risk register on a regular basis to respond to the intelligence alone. to respond to the intelligence alerts that we're getting. We have shared a lot of internal communications where we know there've been issues at other councils to make sure people are aware and can put the necessary controls in place.
And if I just finally, just to sum up, is obviously frauders do take advantage of emergency responses. But I can give the assurance that despite the pressure of business support on, they did prevent a £60,000 mandate fraud during the emergency. So that's some assurance that our existing controls are still being operated by business support. And there is some due diligence around there. But we will be circling back and doing some assurance work and some deeper dives around some of the fraud risk. So, thank you.
Thank you Lucy. Alex, would you like to come in as our fraud champion in our past four? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, was there a bit of feedback there? Just a couple of questions for Diane, please. I just wanted to ask firstly, 87% of the plan, counter fraud plan was completed. So is this a case of do you scope above capacity to drive productivity? Or is this an issue perhaps with resources that's made available for your team? Secondly, I wanted to ask about the sort of trend in timesheet and expense referrals. Do you believe in your judgement that this is sort of following the awareness sessions that I know you've done over the last year or so? Or is this a genuine increase in fraud within the organisation? And then finally, there's social care, financial abuse is considered as being like certain, almost certain. So I just wondered if you could touch on what proactive work that has been going on around that to obviously help in through preventative measures? Thank you.
Diane, are you still there?
Yes, we can hear you Lucy.
Can you hear me now? My mute button keeps setting itself on loud its own.
We can hear you now, well, I can hear you anyway.
Hear me, that's good. Sorry, yes, if we can respond to each of those in turn. The first point about the percentage of plan completed. Certainly, we do stretch our targets. We aim high and we are a high performing team. The area is not completed. Specifically, we're around the policy suite that I was in the process of reviewing. And we were expecting to complete that review February, March time. Unfortunately, with the Covid situation, we had to respond to the emergency situation in terms of business continuity. So that's just delayed that work very slightly, but it will still be picked up. So no, I'm quite comfortable in terms of where we are with the plan. Let's say we use our resources well, we're effective. And as I say, in terms of the benchmarking, the information that we have compared to other councils, we're still high performing. So I'm not concerned by that. Picking up on the expenses frauds. Yes, that was an area that we were particularly concerned with. It seemed to be a spike and it wasn't generated by the awareness work that we did. We had a number of contacts through HR where managers had identified issues with spend expense claims. Good that managers come to us with concerns and we investigate those. As a result of that, we've been working very closely with HR and we've had some awareness in response to that. And that seems to have settled back down again now. So it seems to be a spike that's now settled. And in terms of the social care, the third part of your question councillor Moore, the proactive work, there's a number of strands to that. Social care fraud comes in different forms. One particularly high risk area is around financial abuse. So that might be the risk to the service user rather than the council directly, where they're being targeted by family, friends, carers and externals as well, particularly scammers. And to counter that, we do an awful lot of proactive work in conjunction with Trading Standards. There is a fraud subgroup. And we work very closely with police partners, Trading Standards, multi-agency approach to be able to raise awareness of scams, to try and reduce those incidents of social care fraud and financial abuse. Does that help with the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Diane. Can we move to Paul and then Rob, please? Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to congratulate on Lucy and Diane for a thorough report. Obviously, all crime changes. And if you look at page 150, you know, the fact is, social care, the referrals has come down because obviously we've concentrated on that. And other areas have gone up. I don't call them timesheets, I call them crime sheets. But I think congratulations to our hardworking team. Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you Paul. Rob, would you like to come in?
You're muted.
I think Rob, you are muted.
Okay, yeah, I've been listening and yes, we are going to get a report back about the way that we're handling and trying to respond in a counter fraud sense to the big chunk of money, £55 million that came in from the government. And it was new money, unexpected because of new set of circumstances. And I was just interested in getting some understanding of the relationship between the spread of the money. Spreading the money for different directorates, for different purposes. And the likelihood of fraud, given the nature of that spread of money. So in a big sense, if we were to say 1% of money isn't spent appropriately and therefore could become true to this fraud, that's 550,000, anything less. You know, they're big amounts of money, given this dollop of cash that we're not used to having. And we have to set up both methods of spending it, but also methods of protecting the public as well. So I'd be interested in looking forward to the answers to those sorts of questions. But when we do get some, even if it's not in a report to this committee.
We certainly can pick that up councillor Parker.
Still Diane, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, we can certainly pick that up councillor Parker when we do the review. And we can circulate an update on the outcomes of that to the committee in the autumn that we can brief in between.
Thank you Lucy, I think that would be very helpful in the light of this discussion, Rob's points and what we've discussed earlier on.
If I might just add another point to that, actually. The Government Counter Fraud Centre have issued a very broad estimate of what they expect the fraud target to be. And it is a very broad spread. Generally, they indicate that fraud will be between 0.5% and 5% of spend. So obviously, that is of concern to us. And it's something that we'll review when we update the Fraud Risk Register.
Thank you for that. Do you think it's likely that we will update the risk register?
Yes. So I think that's the end of our presentation on the annual report. If there's any other questions, happy to take them.
Any further questions?
I don't have any further indications to speak.
Thank you Rachel. Okay, so if we can, I will propose the recommendation which is as follows. That the Audit Committee assess the overall effectiveness of the council's arrangements to counter fraud and corruption and the progress made to implement policy. Could I have a second please?
Quite happy with a second there.
Thank you Paul. Again, could I have a raise of hands on the screen, please? And I'm raising mine electronically. That's full raising of hands. You happy Ian? Yes? Ian? Yes, I can see it. Thank you. Thank you. I think that's carried in full, virtual, thank you. And so if we can now move to item eight, which is the internal audit progress reports. If I could turn again to Lucy, please.
Thank you Chairman. Alistair Simpson is taking this one. So Alistair is principal auditor for the team and he helps deliver the actual work for the council. So I'll hand over to Alistair.
Thank you Lucy. Thank you Chair. So just to give you a brief update on the key messages coming out of the report, the progress report. So on page 169, we'll see that we have produced four high assurance reports, higher substantial assurance reports, there being no limited or low assurance reports and one consultancy report. We've also got seven draft reports in place. Since time of writing, two of those are actually now finalised and they'll be reported to the future Audit Committee. Moving to page 170, just to pick up that the 1920 work is almost completed. Page 175 covers what's left. But again, since time of writing, I think four of those five pieces of work, which were at fieldwork stage, are now at draft or final report stage. Again, they'll be reported to the future Audit Committee. As expected, Covid 19 has impacted on our work. It's obviously hard to see people, eligibility is reduced, just caused some delays. Due to that, seven of the audits have been deferred. Four of those were ICT audits which were actually scheduled and planned with specialist resources. We're actually in the process now of rescheduling those for 2021. The expectation is of course that Covid 19 will continue to impact the public sector. Therefore, one of our curious note is the reprioritisation of our audit plan to support the council through this time. The intention is to provide CLT and Audit Committee an updated and refocused plan around September. Pages 177 to 178 just highlight the matters of interest such as around school audits, the DFGs bringing back audit of schools every three years, which could impact on our resources. And also, there's an update on the external, from the external auditor around the statement that accounts delays due to Covid. Again, just moving to page 193 to 199, that just picks up the original plan 2021 audit work. But obviously note that that again, will be looking to be revised in September time to ensure that the council is fully supported through the pandemic. And allow to, any questions? Welcome, any questions?
Thank you Alistair for that. I think Andrew Middleton, you would like to come in?
Yes, thank you Chair. Alistair, when you are revising this plan, what is your view on looking at two areas that give me increased concern? There's safeguarding of adults and children through my NHS sources, I'm hearing concerns there. And the second one is the way of working with the LRF, a mechanism which we have had to use on a regular basis. We may have to use it again. Is that partnership and working relationship effective? Does it need a review? When is it secure for the future?
Thank you Andrew.
Alistair, can you answer those questions or do you want me to pick them up?
I'm happy to pick them up if you're able to Lucy.
Okay, so in response to that, we are picking those areas that they are included in our refocus because they're part of the council's lessons learned in recovery. So in terms of safeguarding, so the other thing in terms of assurance is CLT have been regularly getting an update on the risks, both strategic and operational. And that does include safeguarding. So that was on a fortnightly basis, going on a monthly basis. So there is some oversight and monitoring both at the county council and the safeguarding numbers are also looked through the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum to keep sighted on any anomalies. So the controls are there to manage those risks, that they are acknowledged risks and they're on the registered. So they are being mitigated through appropriate management actions. But we will be looking at those as part of our refocus of the plan.
And the LRF?
Both, yeah. LRF is particularly around the lessons learned, particularly around the governance structure and how it aligns within the council's decision-making process. So again, and business continuity, the council's response to the crisis as well as working collaboratively. So there are, and that's why it's a significant governance issue in the annual governance statement as well. So we will be supporting the assurance around that. But that definitely is one of the areas that is part of the reset of the audit plan as one of the considerations. But there are many areas of focus and we just need to agree what the CLT see are the ones that we can add most value. But those areas are quite significant.
Thank you, that's assuring.
Thank you Lucy. You have my last, Andrew?
Very, thank you.
I don't see any further speakers. Oh, Rob, thank you. Lots indicated.
Councillor Parker, you're muted.
Okay, sorry again. Page 172, which is about assurances in relation to children's services. And I've just lost it because I came out for a moment, there'll be a tick. So on page 72, it's about the mosaic system and it's about substantial assurance. And it's about the point that we looked at and talked to a whole range of people. But they were all, in terms of measuring the effectiveness of the children's mosaic system, meeting the business needs of the user. Okay. This was an extremely internal, officers included managers, practitioners, practice supervisors and some officers who access as an external organisation. I just wondered about the relationship between how everybody felt inside and the impact externally on the main aim, which is to protect children. In other words, the user, whether it be the carer, whether it be the child, whether it would be a relative, relevant, relative. I know Mosaic's an internal system, but it's about relating that to the benefits to the user.
This was a very narrow scope, Rob. So councillor Parker, it didn't cover all those areas that you assessed. One of the challenges I gave back to the team when I was looking at the progress, because Mosaic has been highlighted as a key risk area within the council and it's how the doors to stack up. So it was around, this was a very narrow review, looking at the internal use. And Alistair will be able to give you a bit more detail. Whereas the risks around Mosaic and the actual impact and the case management side is a different risk. So it was a very narrow review. And what I've asked and will be picking up following that conversation and challenge is what further assurance we're going to pick up from the risks identified by the leadership team around Mosaic.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you Chair. Yes, yes. Yeah, hi.
Matt, sorry, your mic doesn't work.
Can Matthew not speak?
No, unfortunately, he has been having some particular issues with his connectivity. So we'll be looking to do that, which is why he hasn't presented the paper today. Hopefully for July, we will get some more feedback and get his connection sorted.
Do you have any further? Do you have any further speakers?
I don't have any further speakers.
Okay, it was just one point to, to note, was that on page 173, obviously we were looking at the legionella bacteria. That's something that's, from people have, um, uh, sort of, um, put into the back of their minds a bit. It was a hot topic several years ago, I think. It was caused a load of problems. So something we can't forget, it's still there. Thank you for that, Lucy. Um, so, um, I will just move to the, um, recommendation, if that's okay. Um, there we, I'm proposing that the audit committee note the outcome of the internal audit's work and identify any necessary actions that need to be taken, which we've done. And I'm looking for a second of these.
I'll second that, chairman.
Thank you. Um, could I have a show of hands again, please, members? I'm indicating, um, uh, by, um, electronic means. Thank you very much. I think that's, uh, everyone, thank you. So then carried, thank you. So, uh, we move to the, uh, final item on the agenda, which was the forward plan, item nine. And Lucy, can I hand over to you, please?
Thank you, chairman. So this really sets out what we, this sets out, um, what we have captured through our workshops with yourselves and the forward plan. So, um, it's really for noting if there's anything that you wish to change or add to the work plan. Um, and also to note that we were, are still, in, in July, we were looking to have, um, a workshop on the corporate plan with CLT. We are looking to try and do that virtually, um, in the autumn. So we can pick up many of the things that the committee's talked about today around, um, fraud, um, recovery, decision-making around projects and oversight. So there was a lot of things there that we've talked about, that we were going to try and have that, um, work um, i- i- in, in a workshop. But we just need to see how we can do that virtually without getting, um, virtual overload. Because that meeting needs to be quite short and sharp. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lucy, for that update. Obviously we've, we had to reschedule some of the March, um, items which have, uh, indicated on the forward plan. Do you have any, any questions to Lucy? Any, any comments, please? Won't see anyone. Wouldn't appear to have. I can take that as we don't have any. Um, so if I could, um, uh, invite, um, everyone to note that, please. Um, which, um, basically we're, um, we're review. That's wonderful. Thank you. So that's, that's recommended. For us to like to consider the action plan and to, um, look at the forward plans. Um, so we satisfy some of the contained assurance that we need to look at. So, um, so does everyone have a with that? I think Rob's indicated, yes. I'm sure of hands, please. Yeah. All hands, thank you very much. I've showed, um, my hand, uh, electronically. Thank you so much, everyone. We then come to reports of information, which is the, um, uh, again, is, is, is for information, which is a ten A, which is the fee scale for the audit 2021 and the update on 2019, 20. Okay, I think with that, um, I would conclude the meeting, members. And we'd like to thank you, um, your attendance today and also thank our offices for, um, attending and assisting us at this meeting. Rachel, can I hand over to you?
Uh, thank you, chairman. Uh, yeah, that's all finished. If members could.